All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order, the February 7th, 2023 meeting of the Springdale School Board. I want to first off introduce our special guest today, Miss Liberty Luna Lewis from Archer. She's gonna come forward and lead the pledge for us.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I have a sheet of all kinds of accomplishments that Ms. Lewis has had in her time here in Springdale, but I'm going to let her tell us all about her experience here in Springdale. Go for it.
Okay, hi. So I moved here in the 7th grade, more mid 7th grade, and I started at J.O. Kelly. And like since I've moved here, I've basically done all my school with like art, so J.O. Kelly Art. I went to SOI for a while. I focused on art there. And I went to Springdale for three months, and now I am at Archer, where I also really focus a lot of my time on art, but now cosmetology as well. So obviously, yeah, my favorite classes were art, but in Archer, my favorite class was journalism. I had an amazing teacher. She was really funny. She gave us a lot of creative freedom to do what we wanted. I got to make portraits, write fun stories, and I got to like work with my classmates. Now I have painting, which is awesome and really nice. But now I'm more focused on my cosmetology, which my counselor has been helping me with. I've started the enrollment process for the Hair Ca- or the Design Academy of Hair, hmm, the Hair Academy. I always mix up its name. I'm going to do cosmetology.
Good.
And that's been it. I have had a meeting with the hair place. I've had conversations. I've started my FASPA form. All I've had such great help with from my counselor, amazing step-by-step process. Is there any questions about this? Cause I'm lost.
Well, before I open it up to my colleagues, I was gonna ask you, how long is cosmetology school, if that's the route you go?
Um, it's not very long at all. I don't remember the exact timeline, but I know it's about under a year. If I only choose to do hair and makeup, if I want to do other things, I can go ahead and take other classes for those.
Board, does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Lewis?
You mentioned you'd like to start in the art business. What kind of art business?
Yes. So I absolutely love art, but I've always been told that I really couldn't, you know, live with just making art, the whole starving artist thing. So after I get a nice steady career in cosmetology, I would love to start in art business and start selling my pieces, because they mean a lot to me and I feel like I could make other people feel good with them too.
What kind of art specifically did you do?
Um, I used to do a lot of portraits of just people, but here recently I have been venturing out further. And I've been doing a lot of aquatic pieces of sharks, squids, octopi. Here right now, I'm doing a Dumbo octopus, little cute guy. But it's a lot.
And what materials do you use? Like what media?
I started with charcoal and now I'm onto acrylic paint and I'm also venturing with the pieces I use. I've started to use oil pastel colored pencils, alcohol markers, and chalk pastel.
So I know Archer a few years ago had that art show. Do you still do that? So maybe when we come, we'll see some of your pieces there?
Yeah, there's actually an art show in April. I'm pretty sure April 20th, and I'm excited about that. I'm trying to work on some pieces for that right now.
Nice.
It's fun.
Well, look for them.
Anybody else? Well, we really do appreciate you being here this evening and look forward to seeing your art pieces at the art show. And then I look forward to you graduating in May, June, whatever it is. So appreciate you being here. Your parents aren't here, are they?
No.
Okay, that's fine. Thanks for being here with her. Look forward to seeing your career.
All right, thank you guys.
Okay, Dr. Cleveland, how's our agenda look? Are we good on everything?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll be here very quick. I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mrs. Creek and a second by Mr. Emerson to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that brings us to the consent agenda portion of our meeting. Are there any questions about the school board meeting minutes from last month or the out-of-district transfers? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve those.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Cook, a second by Mr. Bell, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I'm gonna pass it off to Dr. Cleveland. Did Rodney make it in?
He did.
Oh, he's hiding behind there. Okay, I got it. Okay.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Rodney Ellison. As you know, we've really all been working hard diligently on our workforce. And Mr. Ellison's been doing an extra job at night trying to do some things. And so I just wanted to recognize him for his hard work, including the principals and all the staff and everything. But Mr. Ellison's going above and beyond, so we would have him provide an opportunity for him at night to talk about parent university workforce night.
Yeah, so this is a chance just to kind of take some of the things that we've discussed about exposing our students to technical skills, which could lead into engineering, which could lead into the technical trades, could lead into the medical field. But it's a really good way to expose parents and students to what those pathways are in the district. So working with Melissa Fink and some of our other administrators and Michelle Hutton at Elmdale, we're now in our second group with Bayari. So we're doing this over a period of three weeks. So we'll run it one night a week and we run about two hours. And it's a neat format. The students come in with the parents and what we'll do is we'll kind of show them what some of the equipment is that we'll work on, go through some basic electrical principles. We've been focusing on electrical in this group. And then we're gonna rotate through some other different pathways. The goal will be eventually to expose them to our medical pathways. It could be technology and diesel. It could be engineering. So we'll be doing this across the board. And then it also, they do a lot of hands-on skills. So they'll, what do you actually see that young student doing on my right, which is probably your left, if you're looking at the screen, so I'm guessing. So help me out there. But anyway, the young man and his mom, he's wiring up a light to a switch. So that's something. And actually, his mother, I had to fight her off of him for, to let him do that, but it was a pretty cool scenario. So it's just a way for our kids to learn about what the opportunities are. And so as we migrate that down to the elementary age, you know, progressively keep moving that through in the middle school and the junior highs, then by the time they get to high school, the goal that we have of really opening their eyes and exposing them to all these different opportunities, we've started that seed a lot sooner. So I think that's a, it's a really good, unique way to do it. The first group, we had roughly 10 students and I had about 10 parents. This group, we had 40 parents and students all together, which is a good problem to have. So trying to figure out our spacing, and we'll be using this more and more. This summer, we'll even use this in a camp model. We'll take some of our teachers that are on 230, 205 contracts, bring them in and immerse them with our junior high instructors and our high school instructors so that we just kind of get some cohesion as we move forward. So appreciate the pictures. Dr. Smith came last, or the week before last, before the snow. This Thursday will be our final week with this group, and then we'll move on to another group here before spring's over. So it's just really good ways to just showcase what we're doing in the district. And a lot of times, that's a hard message to get down into those lower elementary grades, but I think this is a good model for us to use. So any questions, thoughts, comments?
Great program.
Yep. All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate your time and your willingness to help us with work.
I do, okay.
You wanna talk about?
Archer.
Career Center partnership?
Yeah. So with a couple of things that we were wanting to highlight is we've had some students who came through Archer, and I'm really trying to bring them into the forefront of this as much as well. Just like the young lady who was standing here in front of you and talking about cosmetology, I think that's a great experience. So what we did the year before last was we took a pilot group and took them to NWTI, and we did a kind of a basic construction fundamentals course, which we have that embedded into our survey of ag and our industrial maintenance. But you learn basic hand tools, power tools. You learn how to measure. You learn the technical math. You learn a lot of different aspects. It creates a really good foundation. So we ran the pilot group the fall before this fall. This fall, we had a group of five who came through Archer and all of them passed. And it's a pretty tough semester course. The technical math is pretty tough. They learn blueprints, schematics, and it's really project-based, hands-oriented. So I'm really proud of those five. The first group, we had two that passed. So out of that, we're moving forward. We're getting more buy-in. And we had a young lady who was in this group who just graduated in December out of this program. And she was also a graduate at Archer this December, and she had been working full-time in the cookie factory at night while going to school during the day. So that landed her a job with Crossland Construction as an apprentice. She wanted to be a carpenter. So she's now doing that. And we have another young man who is potentially gonna be employed with multi-craft and fabrication and welding. He's a full-time cook at Venetian Inn. So it's opening up doorways for these students, which I think is really important. And at the same time, they're getting concurrent credit, so they can take that credit and go into a further program that they choose to. So as we do these with our post-secondary offerings, I'm fixing to leave here and go to Central Junior High. So we're gonna talk to our students about that post-secondary partnerships that we have through NWAAC and Industrial Maintenance and NWTI with, Industrial Maintenance and Diesel Technology with NWTI. And then with the medical aspects and the new EMT program that we'll be rolling out and the pre-nursing track, you know, just more and more exposure to all of our students from Archer all the way across the board. We've been having tours coming to Don Tyson starting this week for all of our 9th graders across the district so that they can see what these same opportunities are. So I think as we move forward, it's just really neat to see what happens, you know, just like the two that I mentioned from Archer. That's a life-changing event. So just that one course and the length of a fall has taken that young lady, it gave her almost an $8 an hour bump into an apprenticeship. She lives on her own, so that's a life-changing event. So I think the more of those things that we can do, she may at some point migrate upward, which is what my hope is. And she'll have some credit pieces already in-house to further facilitate that, you know, towards a degree track or whatever she chooses to do. So a lot of things going on, and I appreciate your support. And, you know, we've had some lunch and learns and talking about these different aspects, and we're making some headway. So I appreciate your support and administration, all of our teachers and administrators in our building. So we're moving.
Mr. Ellison, can you talk a little bit about the state, how the state is moving this direction and how these pieces are coming together with OSD?
Yeah. So one of our partners in this, as I mentioned before, is Arkansas Office of Skills and Development. They're a funding mechanism out of the Department of Commerce and the Workforce Department. So their goal is to create a workforce out of the tax structure dollars that were from the corporate taxes that some of you pay in your titles as in the job. So that funding was built to work with community colleges, work with NWTI, and work with high schools now, to really create a workforce that's well-schooled, well-trained in the high-paid, high-paying, high-demand areas. So that relationship has allowed us to become post-secondary partners with NWAAC and NWTI and a lot of these programs. And so it's really positioned us as our new administration at the state moves forward, there's gonna be even more emphasis on a workforce creation. And if you remember when I told you this, it's not college or this, it's a combination of both, because industry needs those skillsets. One of the things that OSD is looking to do is bring in a state robotics part. They have one in Alabama, and I don't know if you keep track, but Alabama, Tennessee, a lot of automotive manufacturers land there. So that's a key ingredient for us that's missing is automation. So that's something that we're really trying to implement along with OSD and some of these programs in our district, because if we can do that for our students, it doesn't matter if you go to work at a hospital. As I said, it could be children's hospital. It could be in advanced manufacturing. It could be in an entrepreneurial setting. It could be with a robotics integrator. But that, those pieces that OSD is trying to build gives us a platform and a good relationship to offer more of these post-secondary offerings where our students are getting concurrent credit, technical certifications that give them a leg up to get into the workforce at a quicker pace. So those things are moving at a rapid pace. From the state perspective, the platforms will allow OSD to do even more of those different partnerships. So I expect in the next six months, we'll see even more changes in those perspectives, which will be good for us as a district.
You sound like you've been really busy.
Oh, everybody's busy, but it's good. So.
Keep it up.
Yes, sir.
Get over if you're doing toward that. It's being noticed by the state.
It's a good thing. So I mean, couldn't do it without all of you sitting here and him especially, and these people in the back behind me. So it's a big lift, but we're gonna get there. So we're working on it, day by day.
Thank you.
All right. Thank y'all. Appreciate you.
Thanks, sir.
Well, I would tell you, there was a, there's a whole lot going on at the state legislature, but for it being an education session, not a lot's happened in education just yet. I understand the omnibus bill is close to being rolled out. Of course, we were all in LaRocque this week. But for those of you in the crowd, the board and I went last night to LaRocque and met with a lot of state legislators, and then today went to the House Education Committee, which was very important. I have to tell you, just for you to know, your school board is incredible in regard to their ability to communicate effectively with state legislators from the board perspective. So if you all would like to just talk about your experience or maybe even some of the bills that you discussed today or some of the experiences you've had, I think that would be great.
Well, most exciting bills were the one we held on the Treasury.
Okay, so Ms. Green got in the vault and held about $600,000, and she really enjoyed that.
Yes, I understand those are the best kind of bills to have.
Yeah.
Board, would anybody like to talk about our experience either last night or today? Either or, both?
For me, just seeing the process was super eye-opening. Like I'd never seen that detail of what happens to get a bill in and then onto the floor and all of that. So it was really, really interesting to know that I think they would have let us speak against any of those bills if we wanted to. I mean, when they said, is anyone in the room here? And so, you know, like I've always been kind of, I don't want to get involved in that part of it, but it was really neat to see it at that level where you could get involved. So that was my takeaway.
I was thankful for the chamber for setting up last night, both for leadership Springdale and for us to have an opportunity to really interact in a low-key setting with the, with our state representatives and for them giving up their evenings and to come talk to us and listen to what we, you know, had to say and the impact that some of the things that they're putting forth is gonna have on us and on our district. And so there, I may not like everything, but I appreciated their time and efforts to listen to us.
I think last night was a really good opportunity for us to meet with not only the legislators, but also some key leaders or future leaders in Springdale and the businesses in Springdale. And I got to meet Leslie Rutledge. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but I, you know, I guess she's number two in charge, so it was kind of neat to shake her hand and at least have her see my face. She probably won't ever remember it again, but who knows? So it's, it is an interesting process. Like Debbie said, it's very frustrating and maddening a lot of times, but it is what it is. So you just gotta figure out how to, to work with the process and hopefully make it work in your favor. That's a, we had to be seen so far. Anybody else?
I would say that, you know, there's a lot of bills out right now. We don't know which ones will make it to the floor and which ones won't. Some will definitely have a positive effect and some negative. But it was, it was nice to go to the House Education Committee meeting and listen to people who are trying to be changed for good, to actually do change for education in the state. They were working really hard on some important things today. And it was, it was interesting to see that and hear their conversations. I enjoyed that a lot.
I think my biggest, or one of my biggest takeaways was, like everybody said, you know, we really don't have, you, you hope that you can have conversations and make some change or make a difference, but that's not always gonna be the case. So one thing that I kind of took away was just that thought of, no matter what bills are passed, whether good or bad, that it's, it's, what we are tasked with is making sure that we continue to do what's best for kids in this district. And we do whatever we can to make, to continue to make Springdale the choice of where kids want to come. And I think as long as we do that, then whatever bills come are gonna come. And we just, I have a lot of faith in this, in Dr. Cleveland and his team that we'll figure out a way to make it work. And we'll figure out a way to continue to educate kids like we always have. And hurdles or no hurdles, I have a lot of confidence in the group that is running our district, so.
My biggest takeaway was, you know, getting to, getting legislators' ears and, you know, talk to them about some of the things going on. And sometimes figure out that they listen to their group sometimes, and we don't get, tell them how we work and how their decisions can affect some of the things that we do as school board members. So it was nice to get to talk to some of them and let them know about some of the things that, some of the choices or bills that they submit could affect everybody. And so, yeah, that was my takeaway from that.
I would encourage people too, whether you're in the audience or listening online, to find out who your local legislators are and reach out to them, because like we had conversations today with some, and some of the reasons that they were putting forward bills that they were putting forward was because of phone calls and text messages and emails that they have received from people in their district. And so you might think, well, I'm not gonna reach out because they're not gonna listen to me or they don't care what I have to say. And they do. And so if you think that you can't have a role or play an important part, you can. And so don't be afraid to reach out to them because they are listening. Some of those voices that they're hearing may not be the best ones to listen to, but, so I think people regardless need to reach out, because you could make a difference and you could be that voice that they need to hear that could be beneficial for the district.
So I can, I can tell you, a lot of those people that reach out to these folks, I don't think a lot of them were even in, in school. I mean, administrators or school board members or teachers. So we need, definitely we need teachers to reach out and, and kind of voice their opinion to them. So how many, how many teachers do we have?
Come on, all staff here. We've got 3,000.
Power, yeah. Power in numbers. If they hear it enough, they'll make changes.
The omnibus education bill could potentially be out today, floating around some legislators. Could be by the end of the month, it's public or officially filed. Originally, the thought was it was about 500 pages. Last night, we heard it could be between 1 and 200, which is a lot. One of the legislators that we talked to, that I personally know, expressed some anxiety about having one bill as opposed to multiple bills that could be debated and reviewed. But today, this afternoon or this morning, I suppose, right before lunchtime, in the halls of the Capitol outside of House Ed, the, I guess the culminating thought process was, well, let's don't pull it apart, because if we pull it apart, then we could lose instrumental pieces that are necessary for the other portions of the bill, for the education bill to work. So I understand that thinking. So just be paying attention when that bill drops. It could be in tomorrow, Thursday, but it will be impactful for our state. So the thing that I do know personally is that we school district people follow the rules. We follow the law. Whatever law is, we follow. And we try to do it the best of our ability. We just have to make sure that we are focused in communicating and articulating our position in a way that is palatable. I know I struggle with that a lot myself. I can see things, or at least I think I can see things through our lens and try to articulate it with legislators. And I have to do it in a way that the message isn't lost. Because if I come at them or if someone else comes at them hard or aggressive, oftentimes they tune you out, shut the door and keep you away. So you have to constantly be diligent, or diligent in, in how you communicate. It's not always the message, it's how you message it. So our conversations with them need to be, in a way like you all did today, appropriate, with kindness and with assurances of, you know what you're doing? It's board. You've done it for a while. The school district's in good shape. We need additional help. We know that they're trying to help. And it would be really, really good if we could do things together, as opposed to having things done to us over time. And unfortunately, a lot of little bills, they don't, as one legislator told me one time, this is a little old bill that do a whole lot. Those little bills that don't do a whole lot together do a whole lot. Does that make sense? And so our effort is to make sure that those things are well-understood and we understand them and we're able to follow the law. So quite a long month, I apologize, but in the end, I can tell you that we're working really hard. Our goal, for those of you out in the crowd, is to make your life good, to serve you at the highest level so you can focus on kids and we can focus on workplace and boss. Is that about right?
Yeah.
Best I can do. I guess go back tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Mr. Jones. Need some positivity.
I'm for some upbeat news. I'm looking for some upbeat news.
Good evening. Today is a, really a great honor to report that the Springdale Schools YouTube channel that we started in August of 2012 just went over 10 million views. And that is a culminating work of all of your leadership, but also the really great workforce development of our teachers and the great work of our students. And we have helped students for a generation now find their voice while learning skills. And I am very proud to be able to report on that. We put together a little one-minute commercial I wanted to show you all and just really proud of the work, your leadership, Dr. Cleveland's guidance, and the work of our students. So check, take a look at this video. It has become quite the medium where we have 20,000 subscribers, 10 million views that gets pushed out into a social media ecosystem and a communications ecosystem that reaches nearly every resident of Springdale and most of the residents in northwest Arkansas. And it is revered statewide for the work that we are all doing, and I'm just very proud to be able to report that to you.
That was great.
That's exciting. That was edited by Luis Alfaro, and he pulled stuff from all the way back in 2012, which was really fun, kind of going back and seeing how far we've come. Anyway, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Seklin. Well, Mr. Seklin's coming up. We meet roughly every Friday, barring snow and ice and some other things, but I really enjoyed not only getting to know Mr. Seklin better, but working and being really entrenched with the Springdale Education Foundation. We have a true blessing in the foundation. It's a fantastic group of people who care, care about kids, care about this district. Anyway, we've got a new, a new grant cycle and Chris wants to report on that.
Good evening, Board, how are you? In front of you, there's a couple things. The first sheet, we just kind of refer to it as our fact sheet or our brag sheet. And I think it's really important to be able to communicate real succinctly what we do with our donor dollars. And it's, it's a great, it's a good communication tool, but it feels really good when we look at those numbers and we look at the numbers of kids that we're serving. Last year alone, we funded, and I'll tell you, last year, we felt it just like, just like you felt it. Last year was not our, our best fundraising year of the world. We struggled a little bit, but we were still able to fund over $63,600 in grants. And you can see $92,000 in scholarships. So that number, you know, continues to grow, continues to grow. We've added several new scholarship funds. Interestingly enough, all of the new funds that we've added so far have all been workforce-related. So we're going to, we're going to jump our workforce offerings and we're going to, we're going to track Liberty down because we have scholarships that can send you to cosmetology school. We're going to probably increase our workforce offerings up to 10 or 12 in this grant, in this scholarship cycle. So right now, kids are applying. We have 81 applicants so far. The application's open until April 1st. Once that closes, we'll vet those, make those awards at senior assembly. Again, I'm, you can see, we've never quite hit that $100,000 mark of money's awarded. We're close. And maybe this is the year that we've, we pull it all together and we can give out $100,000 in scholarships. As Dr. Cleveland said, there's a new grant cycle opening. March 1st, the next grant cycle will open, available to any district employee to apply for funds as long as it serves kids. And the, the list of things we've funded over the years is, it's just, it's, it's this way. It's really fascinating to watch what, what employees ask for. It kind of gives us an idea of, of kind of where they feel like they're, where they feel there's, there's stuff missing in the gray or there's things they can do with little added funds. And that's exactly what these grant funds were designed to do. So March 1st, we'll open that. We will close that application on May 1st. We'll vet and fund those right before the end of the school year. Money will be available in the business office so people can use grant funds over this, over the summer to get the materials they need to be ready for a fall implementation. A couple of things that are coming up that I want you to be aware of. On the backside of this sheet is information about our next duck race. This is number six. We started five years ago. We put 40 ducks in the, in the creek. We made no money, but we had a lot of fun. That number has continued to grow. Last year, we put 3,200 ducks in the creek. That generated about $25,000 in revenue for us. That goes directly into this grant bucket. This is how we, this is what we use to help fund these classroom grants. We've already started selling sponsorships. We've sold 26 so far for the next duck race. That duck race is September 23rd. We'll be back at Turnbow Park, 11 o'clock. Put it on your calendar. We hope everybody can come out and join us. Our, our target for this one is 5,000 ducks. I told Mayor Sprouse, you know, he's going to have to come up with a bigger front-end loader to get 5,000 ducks in the creek, but I really think we can probably hit that mark. There seems to be a lot of interest in that. And so that is, that has rapidly become our largest single fundraising event that generates pure grant money. So put that on your calendar and make a point to come join us.
When is that? It says September of '23.
So September 23rd. It's a Saturday. Yes, September 23rd of '23. We didn't, we couldn't, we didn't have the date set when we had to get that flyer put together. If you know anyone who might be interested in being a sponsor, you know, there's no shame in telling you I sent, I gave you the sponsor list just in case. We've had really good success soliciting the district's vendors, and we've been able to work with Baldwin and Shell, been able to work with Flint Co., to reach out to the subcontractors they're using in the projects. And we've had good success reaching out to those subcontractors as well. And so I'm really glad to see that support trickle down to the kids. One last, two last things. One last grant-related thing. Many of you have been able to join us at a grant together. And what we do at a grant together, it's a way to crowdsource grant funds. So this last grant cycle, we had, we took two unfunded grants. We'll come together on March 1st at the Odd Soul from 4:30 to 6:30. And literally, we have the two grant descriptions and two chip, tip jars. We'll solicit a sponsor for the evening. The sponsor picks up the first $500 worth of beverages. You come in, what you would normally get to drink, go down, read the two grant descriptions, put your money in the jar you would like to see funded. At the end of the night, it's winner-take-all, and we fund one of those grants that night. It's just a really, for us, it's a great way to attract a different demographic. It's a fundraising event as much as it's a fundraising event, but it's really a way to kind of crowdsource and tap into that. So if anyone is aware of, someone would like to sponsor that event, we're, we're definitely open for, we would like to be able to solicit that pretty soon. We do, we push out all that information digitally. And so Jefro Brown at the Odd Soul has been a phenomenal partner for us. He, he wants us to be in his place, and he reaches out constantly about, how can I support you? How can I, how can I, how can I? And so we like being able to do those in his place. Lastly, I talked briefly some time back about the Northwest Arkansas Education Foundation Co-op. And what that is, is that is a cooperative agreement between the Rogers, Bentonville, Springdale, and Fayetteville Education Foundations. We're working collectively to attract, to try to find ways to attract regional, to attract philanthropic dollars that'll, that'll hit the region. And so we're currently, we, we finished our last Walton Grant. We're on our second round of a Walton Grant right now. We're working with about $450,000 this year to take that co-op from a more informal agreement to spin the co-op off as an, as an umbrella organization that will hopefully, that the task will be to attract private and philanthropic dollars to the region. So our first foray into that, and we'll release this grant application by the end of the week, we have 12 $7,000 grants available to any principal or assistant principal in any of the four districts. The, the arrangement of that, we, there will be at least one grant awarded in each district, and then the eight remaining grants will come from the pool at large. There's $7,000 grants, and they are leadership grants to, to address one of the following: recruitment, retention, and growth of high-performing teachers; creating an inclusive school culture for staff and/or students; promoting social, emotional learning and/or student well-being; and implementing innovative, student-centered approaches to teaching and learning. And so those applications will be opened by the end of the week. They will close the 3rd of April, and those awards will be made sometime late April, early May. And again, open to every principal and assistant principal in the district. So that's kind of a wrap-up of what we're doing. To summarize, what Dr. Cleveland said, yeah, we'll meet every Friday morning when weather permitting and schedules permitting, which is most. And it has been, I think probably in the 13 years that I've been at the foundation, probably the most, the most beneficial 40, 45 minutes every week. It further ensures that I understand better what the needs of the district and where the, where the things in the district are moving, and I think it allows Dr. Cleveland to understand a little bit more about how we can help, where we need to put our efforts and our energy. And so I'm grateful for that opportunity. Questions?
Fantastic work. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Y'all have a great evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Cleveland and Board. I just want to give you a quick overview of something that we've been fortunate enough to be able to be a part of this year. So the leading PLC at work district-wide, from boardroom to classroom professional development that is being offered by DESI, we, we have been a part of that. So they've reached out to different districts across the state, Springdale being one of them, and they have invited them to attend monthly meetings at DESI down in Little Rock. So Dr. Cleveland, along with the curriculum and instruction team, have been going to these meetings. It is being held by Janelle Keating, which I know you had the opportunity to meet her, and she is leading this conversation about what does it look like from the district level. And so it's been very, very informative. I'm not going to go through this, but I do want you to look at these four boxes, and I want to just quickly tell you what each of the boxes represent and tell you how much we have accomplished in a very, very short period of time. And it's because of the trust that you guys had in moving us to collaborative team meetings. So the first one that you see is the school board and superintendent. And I want you to kind of think of three things. There are three big ideas with the PLC process, and that is collaboration, results, and a focus on learning. Those are the three big things. So if you look at the school board and superintendent, I'm going to outline some of those in just a minute. The red one is talking about the district level and principal teams. Monthly, Dr. Cleveland, along with the CNI team, meet with all the principals, and they go very deep in the collaboration of the CTM time that, that, that teachers are given. If you'll move over to the purple, this is school-level teams along with content team. What this is talking about is our guiding coalition. Last year, when we knew we were moving to CTMs, every single school in our district created a guiding coalition, and that guiding coalition is completely focused on teaching and learning and bringing that work forward so every school can move. And then the last one, which is the one that you guys allowed us to do, is the 80 minutes every single Wednesday where teams can come together and collaborate. If you'll notice on the bottom, the arrows go back as well. So in our district, you have seen this before, but this is how we're managing the work for a district our size. When we've been down in Little Rock, we hear a lot from some of the other districts, and most of the districts are 1,000, 2,000, and so ours looks completely different than some of those districts. But if you'll remember, we did a refocus on our vision and mission, and then we led the district principals in that same. So every single principal went back to their building and either revisited or reimagined their school vision and mission statement. So everything's been updated and new, and then teachers focus on their personal why statements. From that, so that's one of the things, vision and mission. Then we talked about our big audacious goal. As you guys know, we have five, but we can't make movement on the five big audacious goals at a district level. It has to be at the, the building level. So every single school came alongside and established their goals for the year, and those goals completely align with our goals. And then if you'll go over, just because we have a goal doesn't mean anything's going to happen if action can't be taken. So every single building has a strategic action plan that actually is a step-by-step process of how they're going to achieve their goals. So if our district has a big audacious goal of improving something by 10%, then the buildings have ownership in that as well, and they create a strategic action plan on focusing on every single one of those. I want to say a big kudos to Ms. Tisher and Ms. Fink. They are heavily focused on this, and the principals, in our principals meeting with Dr. Cleveland, every single one of them, their vocabulary was aligned beautifully with the work that we are doing and with each other. The other thing that's been happening with these strategic action plans that I'm, I'm very proud of is, I said, if you'll hear me talk about data, collaboration, and a focus on learning, our principals lean on each other for the experts that they are. So if they're needing help with something, they know who to reach out to in the district, and those people now become coaches for the other people in the district. So the last little thing is, we've done a great job. Now our goal is to make sure that the information that we're doing now comes back to you guys. So in the future, you'll be getting some updated information, you'll be getting some more on our strategic action plans, and we'll be giving you that information so that you have a better idea of what's happening in the district. But I can't say enough, you guys realize that less than a year ago, we were asking for the 80 minutes, and all this has happened within less than a half a year. So just wanted to say thank you. I know the teachers really appreciate the time together, and we couldn't have done that without your commitment, so. Do you have any questions?
Good evening, Board, Dr. Cleveland. The first item that we have for you this evening is an update on our ESSR funds. And to keep this report tonight, I've asked Stacy Hopkins from the business office to come and do that for us. Stacy joined our district in July. She came from us, to us from School District in Central Arkansas, where she was the business manager. And when I found out Stacy was relocating to the northwest Arkansas area, I visited with Dr. Cleveland and said, "I would really like for someone to come in and ride herd over ESSR to make sure we're doing it appropriately and going to get all that money spent in a, in a good way by the deadline." So this is Stacy Hopkins.
Good evening, Dr. Cleveland and the Board. I'm happy to be here. This has been a great opportunity for me and a good location move for us. But in your packet, you'll see that there is a summary of how we've spent our ESSR funds through December of 2022. We've received a little over, or we are scheduled to receive a little over 63 million, or six, just under 63 million. We spent about 35 of that so far. We've liquidated all of our ESSR I funding. We should have all of our ESSR II funding liquidated by the end of this school year. The focus has been on technology, additional classroom support in the form of certified staff. Those are additional teachers available to help students that are needing some extra help in the classroom. Curriculum supplies, professional development, and also the incentive or retention pay that we gave to all staff. As you'll recall, last fall, there was a strong recommendation from the Arkansas State Legislature that we provide a bonus to all of our staff. You, as a Board, approved that in November, and we gave half of that in November. We're giving the other half in May of 2023. We're giving the other half in May of 2023. The two payments together bring to, combined, bring the total amount that the legislature had requested. Mr. Hayes also asked that I kind of share with you what the process is for us to have an expenditure approved to be spent from ESAR funding. You know, you hear all the time, oh, just use your ESAR funds. You hear that from vendors, you hear that on TV and all that. In Arkansas, it's not quite that simple. We have to have anything over $5,000 has to be submitted to the Department of Ed for approval. There's several hurdles that go with that. The first one that I have to do is it has to be used for, comply with the statutory intent of the American Rescue and Recovery Plan. There's three uses to start with: creating a safe and healthy learning environment, addressing lost instructional time, you hear loss of learning a lot, supporting educator and staff stability and well-being. Once I've established that criteria, then I still have to bring it back to, how does this support COVID, our mission to deter COVID in our, you know, in our school? And so they're asking me, you know, does it support social distancing? How does it help with contact tracing? And that's kind of, it's not difficult to do, but it's kind of disconcerting because to me, at this point, we're kind of on the backside of COVID, so we need to be more focused on addressing learning loss. And sometimes I feel like they're kind of holding us back on meeting that goal, which to me is most important at this stage. Finally, the last hurdle is, they have some program codes that they've given to us, and it has to comply with those. Those program codes cover anything from, does it meet the criteria or availability as we have for ESA? Is it sanitation, technology, that sort of thing? So only after we've met all those three sections of the justification can I get approval. Now, I'll tell you that they haven't approved everything that we've asked for. We've had some give and take. I've had to go back and re-explain why we feel these things are reasonable and necessary. That's what they're looking for. There's a few things that they have not approved at this point that I've kind of stuck back in in my folder. We had a big, it's a, it's ever-evolving what they will allow and what they won't allow. They had a big push from the U.S. Department of Ed back in December where they kind of reframed the guidelines a little bit. And so I'm hoping that as we get a little bit closer to the deadlines of when these funds need to be liquidated, that we're going to see them move away from the prevention of COVID and more toward learning loss. And so I'm hopeful that some of those things that they have returned back to us as a no for right now may be a yes in the future. Future planned expenses, we continue, we plan to continue our summer school programs. Those are more robust than we've had in previous years, so we know we can fund that for the next two summers. We're going to continue those additional supports in the classroom with those certified staff. We're going to continue those supports. We've added instructional assistants. We've added technology assistants. We've added nurses, social workers, behavioral interventionists. So we want to be able to plan and fund those continuing through the 2024 school year. We also intend to use some of those funds, or ask to use some of those funds for some non-traditional learning environments as far as some of our new construction that we're doing at the two junior highs at Central and Southwest. Do those learning stairs, some things like that, where we give the option for those students to have a little bit of alternative environment from the classroom, but also be able to spread out should we need to go back to those social distancing constraints. I'm glad that I was able to follow up with Dr. Smith behind her because the other focus is continuing those PLCs and those SEL groups that they've started. And we're just moving forward with those, and that kind of completes my report. Do y'all have any questions?
You may have said this, when, when do we have to have the 27 million split by?
We have an obligation deadline of September of 2024 and liquidation by December of 2024. There has been some discussion. I don't know how far it's going to go, that they might extend the liquidation deadline just because of supply chain interruptions, but right now, we haven't seen that, and we haven't seen an extension of that September obligation deadline yet.
This is super helpful, by the way. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm so glad she's here to help with this because, great job with it.
Kelly, what were those amounts, those two incentive amounts that we did in November?
1,200 each time.
Okay.
Yes. And that brings our total overall to 5,000 a person.
That's right.
Yeah. Which was the recommendation by the legislative committee.
So they, they have released all the funds that they were holding over our head?
Um, they weren't holding any of ours. It's on a reimbursing basis, and so we had to spend it in order to get it.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, they did. They did. You're right. But yes, we had to turn in a plan, and we turned in our plan that we had developed, and they approved it, and so, yes, then we were good. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
So are we fully reimbursed then for ESAR I?
Yes, yes. ESAR I's completely finished. ESAR II is practically finished, and so now we're just working on ARP ESAR for the remaining time.
That would be so easy.
No, it's ARP ESAR. Okay, Board, the next item that I have for you this evening is the proposed budget of expenditures. This is, well, the way I say it is, this kicks off the election cycle. We are asked to publish a proposed budget, and it has to be two years henceforth. And so this would be the budget for the 2425 school year, fiscal year. And so I just have a history over time of what we've spent in these different categories, and I just extrapolate it out as best I can. And usually, when that year gets here, I'm embarrassed at how much I've missed it. But this is a requirement of the law. It begins the election cycle. We will publish that, and then a little down the road, then they'll publish the ballots, et cetera, because this does have to be on the ballot. Since we are not asking for a change in the millage or a change to our debt or an extension or anything like that, it does not require voter approval, however, it does have to be on the ballot.
I'm trying to confuse everyone.
After today, that makes total sense.
So I would ask that the Board consider approving this proposed budget.
I make a motion that we approve the proposed budget of expenditures for the tax, or the school year 2024 to 2025 as presented. Second.
All right, we have a, excuse me, a motion by Mrs. Creek, a second by Mrs. Cook to approve the proposed budget of expenditures for 2425. All those in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it.
The next item that I have for you is, I would ask you to consider passing a resolution for a related party transaction. Jim Featherston is an employee of the district. He works at Tyson Elementary, and Mr. Featherston has a business where he converts videotapes to digital format. And at our, and there are times when it's in our best interest, we apparently still have some videotapes. We would like to transition, and he does it at a very competitive price, and so we would like the opportunity, opportunity to be able to use him if it's in our best interest to do so.
I'll give you videotapes.
I'm sorry?
Said, what are videotapes?
I gave him some free advertising. He did some for me, and he does good work. So if anybody on the Board needs to use him, he is, he is good, so.
He's got videotapes.
I'll make a motion to pass the resolution and approve related party. All right. We have a motion by Mr. Emerson, a second by Mr. Bell to approve the, what did they?
Related party resolution.
Resolution. Peace. It's been a long day. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Okay, the next item that I have for you this evening, Board, are the financials for the month of January. Something I wanted to point out that was kind of a curveball thrown at us this month was, and I'll try to make it as succinct as I can. You know that the state of Arkansas, primary residents, you receive a 300 and, I don't know if it's 50 or 75 now.
75, homestead credit?
Yeah, you get a homestead credit off of your property taxes. That's just an amount they deduct off of your property taxes on your primary home. Well, when that passed, of course, schools were concerned about losing all that revenue, and so a sales tax was enacted that would be collected to repay districts for that amount that the homestead credits. And so every year, the county assessor turns in a, hey, here's how much Springdale is owed for the homestead credits collectively. It's around $5 million. And so the sales tax, as it's collected every month, then they pay us back, so to speak. Well, what's happened is, over time, the money is about all collected by, in six months. It's on a calendar year, and it's collected in the spring between January and June. And so then the rest of the year, that sales tax money still comes in, but they don't send it to us because they've sent us all of our money that we were owed. Does that make sense? But they're still collecting the sales tax. So the sales tax just accumulates in this account. And so we just don't get any in the fall semester, but come January, boy, I'm looking for that money because I've been waiting on it, right? And so we've all been waiting on it, knowing it's been piling up. And last year, from Washington County, we got 3.2 million in the month of January. So when they made our payment to us this year, it was 2.4 million. And I was like, where's the rest of our money, you know? So I started calling my counterparts around the area and across the state, not calling them, emailing them, saying, hey, can you check and see was your property tax relief mount lower in January than it was this time last year? And we all discovered that we had about a 25% drop in what we were expecting. And so I started calling, trying to figure out what was going on, and, I mean, this is being recorded, right? But the bottom line is, our funds got raided. The state moved out some of that sales tax money they collected into another pot for other uses, which they've done before, but it's never negatively impacted us like this. But when we finally got to the end of the line to find out, what we were told was, yes, your, your amount was lower, but you will be made whole, or you will get to where you've always been by May. So that was kind of a long explanation to you guys, but I just wanted you to know, that's partially why I'm behind on revenue right now compared to last year, because they shorted us. We didn't know they were going to do it, or at least nobody I knew knew they were going to do it, so it was a surprise. But they're assuring us that by the end of May, because see, our fiscal year, you know, I was worried about it impacting our fiscal year collections, but anyway.
They didn't think that $800,000 was going to maybe...
That was just us. I, I just worried about small districts that might have not, you know, might have really been counting on that, you know? So anyway, did I mischaracterize that in any way?
Maybe I addressed it in a harsh way.
I, yeah, I did, yeah. I shouldn't use the word raided.
A gentler way, maybe.
Yeah.
We're prepared for it today. Let us have it.
They postponed payments.
Yeah, yeah, and...
They didn't think you would know this.
Without telling us.
Yeah, without prior notification. That's crazy.
Probably just got a black mark if anybody saw that.
It's okay.
So anyway, other than that, other than that, the report is looking good. We're, we're on, we're online with everything, so I'm pleased with it.
I'll make a motion to approve the January 2023 financial statement. Second. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Emerson, a second by Mr. Ramos to approve the financials as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, Mr. White, to the podium.
Good job, Mr. Hayes.
Hello, Board. Dr. Cleveland, I've got a construction update. I don't have any photos this time.
No photos?
I know. Yeah, the weather, yeah, the weather didn't make good photos.
We went by Central today, though, on the way in. I can admit.
Yeah. So, so even though we had bad weather, I mean, we did work on construction last week along with some snow and ice. So at Central, they're standing the steel in Area C and D, which Area C is the gym area and the CTE spaces. Area D is office and sped areas. So they're putting that in right now. They're adding the tapping sleeve for the new 8-inch water line. They have finished all the courtyard storm drains and started the, the storm drains on the east side of that project. The plumbers are working on getting the sewer lines out of that building to the city connection. The electricians have been digging the, the main feed for that building, digging those lines in, getting the conduits in place to have the primary power for that project. Next week, they'll tap the new water line, and they'll start setting the tees out and the new hydrants on that property. And then they're going to continue to stand steel in Area C and D. And then work, they'll, they'll continue to work on those storm drains. And that was at Central. And then we also worked, we're actually working on the AV plans for that project and the floor layout for the, the striping on the gym floor and the auxiliary gym. So we continue to work ahead of, of the progress that they're at, you know? At Southwest, they had the same, same issues. We, we didn't get a lot of work done, you know, in the planning phases. So they have been installing the sanitary sewer lines. They're getting ready for the new water meter, new fire hydrant. They're doing the, well, they're getting ready to start the final grading around the fieldhouse as soon as it dries up a little bit, weather lets on. In the fieldhouse, they did make a lot of progress. They've got all the mechanicals complete above ceiling, and they've got that inspection completed and, and passed. They're just going to start installing the sheet rock ceilings in there. They've got all the interior walls primed, and then as soon as the weather allows them, they'll start installing the brick on that fieldhouse. On the main building, they're standing steel in Area A and B, which that's the gym area and then the cafeteria and library area of that building. And it actually has some decking going into place on that section of, of steel. They've got one section of the learning stairs steel completed, so those will, they'll be steel, and then they'll pour concrete in on them. And then so next week, they will start Area C and D, actually at the end of this week, as long as the weather permits. And that's the classroom section of the building, and then the CTEs, AGRI, and everything's on, on the very end. So they'll start that, and then they're planning on pouring the elevator slab and then a section of the auxiliary gym floor that, that they had to leave out so they could get a crane in there to set that steel. So by the end of the week, hopefully, we'll be pouring that on that job. At Springdale High, they, they did get some concrete poured on the inside of the competition gym. They've got the footings poured inside the competition gym and, and outside around the auxiliary gym. They've, they've put up all the masonry walls inside the competition gym, and those will actually go up to the second floor for that area where you'll walk around, you'll be able to walk around the gym. And they've got all the mechanicals roughed in into those walls. They've started putting decking on. They were actually working on it today. And then they're starting to install some of the structural steel and decking for the auxiliary gym. That's, that's all I have on those three projects. George Elementary, the state got back to us yesterday with her comments on our plans. They had three, three comments. So we got with the core architect, and we got those answered today back to the, to the state. So she plans on... Architect, and we got those answered today back to the state. So she plans on approving that project this week. So that did push back our bid date to February 15. But that is a big stepping stone for us is to get that approval. And the South driveway at Don Tyson School of Innovation is complete. We've got that finished up with bowling and shell. So now we will be able to put in speed tables and signage and get that totally done. We're working on the district hail damage. You know, we put out an RFQ at Running the Paper. So those are due back February 13 at 2 o'clock. We're going to open those up at Core Architects Business. And then we'll start the selection process to get down to the construction manager for that project. And that project, it includes about 20 campuses that need roof repairs. Some's more major than others. And then the start date on that will be May of '23 and a completion of August of '24.
Is that all of our money from the insurance company?
We have on the tornado damage. And then the insurance will be involved in this RFQ, you know, as we select a CM. Once that selection happens, I think that's set for the 20th for us to make the final selection for the CM. And then we'll give them two weeks. So they'll go to every site that's had damage, and they will take their own measurements, own core sample the roofs, everything they need to provide a bid. And then we'll have a time we can negotiate with the insurance and the CM. And then we have verified with the insurance company, you know, you can't see every part of the roof, even taking core samples and stuff. So if there is damage, once we take the roof off to replace the new and found saturated insulation or whatever it is, you know, the insurance willing to make adjustments on that. So this project, they will be involved in all the processes on the CMs we pick through the whole process.
They finished virtually all of it, but there's a holdback until we...
Right, yeah.
So that's really it. I mean, last week, all we did, we put out salt, we plowed, and then we started it all over again. That's what we did for the week. Later in the week, we shoveled sidewalks, getting ready, hoping we could have school on Friday. You know, we continually monitored HVAC in the schools to help not have any damage. And then all week, just drove all the roads, bus routes, you know, to try to get all the information to Dr. Cleveland, so we could make the...
We had some early morning talks, didn't we?
We had some early morning talks. Yeah. So, you know, it was a busy week, but we did get a lot of progress done on construction and on the buildings. Do you guys have any questions?
What kind of responses are you having with the people that are responding to be CM?
We've had, yeah, we've had a lot of CMs reach out and take the RFQ packet. So, I mean, there's a lot of interest in this job. It's not going to be an easy job. Some of them picked up the packet and called me one of the meeting, came into my office and said, look, it's more than we wanted. You know, they're having the same issues we are. You know, they're down on manpower. They have, a lot of them have a lot of jobs already going. So, you know, this job's not easy because it is 20 different campuses and it's spread out. You know, it's not all in one spot. And, you know, a lot of the, it's not just one type of roof material. There's standing seam metal. There's modified bitumen. There's, I mean, there's residential shingles. We've got some awnings that were damaged. So there's a lot of different contractors that'll be involved. So it'll be a pretty big job to, just to supervise it and make sure we can meet those timelines. You know, and the insurance, they want to get it done as quick as possible. They want to get it done in less than a year. They wanted us to get it done before next summer, but with that many schools and a lot of the summer school, we're going to have to pick and set our schedule. Hopefully we can get material and get about half of them done this summer. And then we'll switch summer school next summer and do the other, the ones we need. And there are a few support buildings that we can work around. You know, we're not really on, we can do them anytime. So we'll work through that once the construction manager goes through and sees all the properties.
Thanks, Laura.
Good evening, board. My name is Valerie Hannah, and I'm a member of SEA, and I'm a kindergarten teacher here in the district. So I actually, this wasn't on my agenda for the evening, but after hearing Dr. Smith's talk, I thought I would just add a little bit to her. I will be the first to admit that I was scared about early out on Wednesdays and how are we going to fit it all in and all that. And I got the privilege of going to one of the PLC at work trainings this last semester. And I have witnessed what it has done with my team and what it has done for our students. And it has been, it's been truly amazing and the gains that we've seen them making. And this is my first year back in kindergarten. I'd been in first grade for the previous six years. And two of the teachers that have been in kindergarten for a couple of years now, they're like, they're already reading. I've got kids already reading. It's December. And I'm going, like, yeah, it's a thing. We can do this. And I credit a lot of that to the work that we've gotten to do with the CTMs and those Wednesdays off. So I do, you know, appreciate that and appreciate the vision that Dr. Cleveland and Ms. Smith and others had for us with that. Definitely excited to actually be back in school this week. It was a very full week last week. You know, lots of Zoom meetings with the kids. From a kindergarten perspective, the mute button is a godsend. But other than that, just in general, there's so much that, there's only so much you can do over a Zoom. And so being able to get back in the buildings and have the kids with us and get that learning going again has been amazing. So as our legislative section continues, we're continuing to visit with the legislators to promote public education, and we're watching out for the bill, and especially those that are going to impact our students and our profession. AEA, back on January 21, hosted a legislative conference in Little Rock. And myself, along with several other of our SEA members, went down to attend. We had a great panel of legislators there, including Senator Chesterfield, Senator English, Representative Brian Evans, Representative Tippi, I cannot say, McCollough?
McCollough.
McCollough. For whatever reason, that one just, it just gives me fears. And then Representative Joyce Springer came to speak with us. It was, you know, really enlightening, and they really, they really seemed to have the best interests of our students and publication, public education in mind. It was, however, very eye-opening to learn at the time, which again, this is two weeks ago, and a lot of things change, that at the time, those representatives and senators did not have any access or information about this education bill that was coming. And that they couldn't give us when we'd say, well, you know, who's sponsoring the bill or who's writing the bill? And they were like, we don't, we don't really know, which makes all of us feel those worried feelings that we don't like. I definitely agree with the board that the legislators that we spoke with are very pro-public education. But I don't know that the same can be said coming out of that bill that's coming at us. But I think that Mr. Emerson was very correct in saying that no matter what comes at us, that we're Springdale. We're educators. We're here for the students, and that it's going to be okay. So we are looking forward to working with these educators and continuing that conversation with our local legislators in the weeks ahead. And it feels very good to know that our board has our back as we look to the future for our students. Any questions?
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
I don't see any patrons out there. I know everybody here, so I think we're good there. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to call that a wrap. Thanks for being here tonight, and we adjourned.